I want to call to order the monthly meeting of Community Unit School District 186 Board Meeting. And Nancy, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Beavers.
Here.
Dr. Corley, absent. Mrs. Dorr.
Here.
Mr. Green, absent. Mrs. James.
Here.
Mrs. Miller. Here. And Mr. Runge.
Here. All right, Pledge of Allegiance. Nancy, why don't you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy? All right, we need to approve the agenda for tonight. Are there any changes, Mr. Grody?
Yes, sir, there are three.
Okay.
So that Mr. Wilson can get to a basketball game. We would like to move Old Business Number Five to Number One. Take care of that first, that's setting the baccalaureate and the graduation dates and times.
Okay.
We are tabling New Business Number Three, renewal of the transportation contract with West Bus Service. They got us the information today. We're still looking it over, and so we're not ready to have a recommendation or take action on that. And then I also like to add Item Number Five, or actually, I guess since we're tabling Three, it would be however you want to number it. But we'd like to have an informational item added about security. Just some security trainings and some discussions about that.
That's the Three?
That is, yes, sir.
All right, then I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Number Five is the approval of the Consent Agenda, which includes District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated 1/16/18, Tri-County Regular Board Minute Meetings dated 1/10/18, Tri-County Bills for February of 2018, applications and reports. I will accept a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
You go to draw.
Oh, Paul.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Number Six is the approval of District 186 Bills for February 2018. Are there any questions from the Board? And please let us know if there are, what page you are on.
Mine's a very general question, because I noticed there are Socrates on it. Are we funding soccer now? Are we through the two years of private?
No, we still get money.
It's going to be the end of it, though, right?
This is the second year.
We write a letter every year to Smizer, and Smizer's been the one that's been covering it the last few years. So we're going to continue to do that as long as we can.
This is the end of Year Two of that, right?
We've had soccer for two years.
Yes.
I just have a question. There were a lot of meal and lunch reimbursements, it looked like. Is there, I guess, a policy on that? I know typically that's where I am. That's not allowed on a state account?
It is if, for professional development, if we have teachers going to workshops and...
But at some of them, it doesn't look like it's related to travel. So I guess that's why I have some questions. It just says Admin Meeting Lunch. Admin Meeting Lunch, Music Office Staff Meeting Lunch.
And those are typically tied to meetings, though. They're not just, you know, I'm going to lunch by myself.
Right, I get that, but even like at SIU, you can't have a working lunch meeting on a state account. So I was just curious if that's different here?
Yeah, we do allow that.
And then... I guess I personally, I guess I don't think that that's... Something, well, I guess I should say this. Is there then something set up as a maxed-in amount of meal reimbursements that we allow in a year?
For meetings or for?
For people, yeah, for people that...
I'll need to work up policy and get back to you on that.
Yeah, no question.
Other questions? Everybody good?
Oh, just the new Ameren Electric Gas, the new people, when does that start?
We received two individual bills this past week, a week before last, and I called and said, remember? One bill for everything. I just got, I just got new Ameren bills Karen gave me today or yesterday. So, you know, they started off on the wrong foot again, but they promised to get that right. So we'll see one bill for everything with the new company. And there were a couple in-betweens with AEP Energy, that's a new company. We should see, and you'll still see a breakout, but it'll be one bill. We'll still break out by account codes, because with the, with the new reporting for the next fiscal year for us to report by, you know, by attendance centers, by each building, we'll continue to break, break things out per building. But it'll be at least on one bill for us. We'll get it broken down by separate accounts. But currently, that hasn't happened yet. We're still, they're still trickling in. But we're, I'm hoping we'll get there. Because you heard the promises made when we talked about the meeting.
Right, well, and then I could, yeah, I've noticed they're different.
But I have the spreadsheet and tracked it all in by date, by account, so we don't double pay any of those charges.
And I just noted there's, on the one we just got tonight, there's an iPass Honda. My experience says somebody got a speeding ticket, so...
No, on the Honda, we have one of the iPass things on the windshield. So any professional development, any meetings that are, actually, it's not just in Illinois, you know, if you want to go. So we don't have to pay.
So we have one on one car?
That was, I remember, yeah, it's just on, it's just on the Honda. So if you had to move it, you could, but typically, we don't take the big vans on those long trips. We try to get them all in there, so we, so that's half the cost. If you were paying tolls out of pocket, you would pay double that. So we have that account. It gets, when it hits a certain amount, it reloads $40 automatically.
I do have one question. We made a payment to, it looks like Shawnee Community Unit School District eighty-four for speech pathologist.
We use forty percent of one of their speech pathologists. The two that we have, they'll cover all the speech IPs that we have. So it's a pretty good deal for our district. She is a very sharp young lady and does a lot of great work.
So we just, we pay that once a year?
We pay, yeah.
Because I hadn't seen that on here before.
Right, it's, we've had it, this is second year?
Second or third.
The second year, and we're looking to need the same thing again next year due to our, the speech caseload. So she's here, she comes here and does all the speech in, for our pre-K age kids that are required to have an AEP.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Bush. I would accept a motion to approve the District 186 Bills for February.
So moved.
And a second? Nancy?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Dr. Corley, absent. Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green, absent. Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Mr. Runge?
Yes, motion carries. Is anybody else hot?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, God. Took a quick count of sweat.
I think you two are about to freeze out there. I haven't talked about it for my temperature yet.
All right, while these, we're going to, we're going to move on. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next item of business is Communications.
I have two. Dear Board of Education, please accept this letter as notification of my intent to retire at the end of the 2020-21 school year. I have genuinely enjoyed the time I have spent in Murfreesboro District 186. I am so grateful and thankful that I've spent the last twenty-eight years of my thirty-four-year teaching career at Murfreesboro. I've always given my best to this, to my students. In return, they have always given back to me. What a wonderful exchange we've shared. I wish you and Murfreesboro District nothing but goodness and kindness and all the best in the years to come. Sincerely, Vivica Clark.
Recommendations to accept Ms. Clark's letter of retirement?
Further recommendation from administration. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, this is a letter of intent to retire my position as Special Education Teacher for District 186, effective at the end of the 2017-18 school year. I want to thank the administration and school board for the opportunity to work in the district for the last six years. I appreciate the dedication and support of fellow staff members in the district. With gratitude and best wishes, Jan Luki.
Recommendations to accept Mrs. Luki's retirement as well.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from administration. Do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it? All right, I do have one communication for the Board. I will not be at the April Board meeting. I have to be out of town, so I just wanted to let you know that. Okay. Fiscal items, and I know we have several. Go ahead, Mrs. Dorr, we'll let's start with you.
Okay. Mr. Grody and School Board, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to the district and yourself of Mr., of Miss Stephanie Hanson for Corus at Corathers. She goes above and beyond for the students and their developing talents, while she did her own time and family's time to do so. Aside from that, I appreciate that she was able to go to the IEMA conference representing our district, only, the only one outside of the Metro East, then assisted my daughter in the All-State Sing. Thank you so much for allowing exceptional people to do exceptional things. It was, it was a great, um... Some action of Murfreesboro and made me proud to be a part of our district and community. Sincerely, Brooke and Ryan Gutman. And then congratulations to Head Coach Shay Baker, Assistant Coaches Drew Hopkins, Bill Deeds, Ted Baker, and Dan Baker, and the members of the MHS Run Devils Wrestling Team. They recently won the IHSA Class 1A Regional Championship. This marks the thirteenth season. The Devils have won the state's regional title. In fact, the team is in action tonight at the IHSA Dual Team Sectional in Benton. With a win tonight over top-ranked Vandelia, the Devils would advance as a team to the IHSA State Tournament for only the third time in school history. Congratulations to individual wrestlers Sam Deeds and Ryan Chambers. Both advanced to the IHSA Individual Tournament this past weekend. Sam finished fifth, Ryan finished fourth. Congrats to Head Coach Krista Odell, Assistant Coach Kaylee Hughes, and the members of the Devil Dazzlers. The girls advanced to the IHSA State Competition for the fifth time in the past six years and finished twenty-first in the state. The team advanced to the IDTA State Competition for the thirteenth straight year. This year, the team got moved up to a larger school division, but managed to bring home the third-place state trophy. Congrats to Head Coach Daryl Murphy, Assistant Coaches Ben Dogan, Matt Decker, John Marston, Jason Jarrett, and the members of the Varsity Boys Basketball Team. Last week, they, the team won their twentieth game of the season. During Coach Murphy's twenty-two-year career here at MHS, they've earned eighteen winning seasons, won twenty or more games in a single season twelve times, won eleven conference titles, and have won the regional title eight times. Finally, congratulations to Head Coach Keith Jones, Assistant Coaches Arrow Sheeka Smith, Amy Raffel, and the members of the Varsity Girls Basketball Team. Devils had a very good season. In fact, they finished second in the conference behind only the state's number-one-ranked and undefeated Harrisburg team. The Devils also played for the IHSA Regional Championship last Thursday. The team finished the season with the fifth-most single-season wins in school history with eighteen victories.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a letter addressed to Mr. Grody and all the Board members. It is from the kindergarten teachers. They wrote to show their extreme gratitude to Miss Nancy Keenan. In her last year of teaching, she has gone completely above and beyond to help our struggling kindergarten students. She has willingly done so with enthusiasm, no aid, and a much larger caseload. She has been an unmeasurable help to our kindergarten team and students, and we have seen growth in our students because of her. And it's signed individually by all of the other kindergarten teachers.
Very good. There wasn't one in John's spot, was there? Oh, you took it. Mr. Beavers?
On Thursday, January eighteenth, Murfreesboro Middle School held a steam night for their students and community. The event was designed to promote hands-on experiences in the science field. There were three D printers, reptiles, Star Lab, Color Lab, hovercrafts, virtual reality glasses, and much more. Michelle Nichols from Adler Planetarium came and had her telescope to set up to view the night skies. Students were able to create magnetic slime and have their photo taken on the moon with use of a green screen. The event helped to raise money for the middle school science department to put towards a three-D printer. Attendance was free, but donations and concessions help provide funds. The turnout exceeded expectations, and we are using the momentum to make this an annual event. Signed, Monica May and Carla Baker.
I attended that, and it was, it was a very nice event.
It was amazing.
Well-attended.
Cool.
Great. And this is from Mr. Huber. On January twenty-seventh, Carolyn Gutman and Genoa McCarroll represented Corathers, the district in our community, at Illinois Music Education All-State Elementary Course. And this is from Mr. Keener. Congratulations to MMS softball coach Kim Cook. On Saturday, she was the recipient of the Illinois Coaches Association 2017 Class L Softball Coach of the Year. This past fall, Coach Cook's team finished the year twenty-five to four. The twenty-six wins included an undefeated conference championship and a second-place finish in the Class L State Tournament in Centaria. We are very proud of the team's accomplishments and very deserving award to Coach Cook.
Very good. Those are the letters we like to hear. Thank you all. Next item is Freedom of Information Act request. There was two?
We had two. There was one from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, asking for the names, emails. I believe we've had this a few times. And the second was from the MEA requesting information about certified employees, interview process, contract salary, posting of positions. I believe we sent the MEA one out today, and the other one's been responded to as well, so...
How many teachers do we have retiring at the end of the school year?
Three.
Three?
Yes.
Four now.
Four. Four now. Three special ed and first grade.
Whoa.
Gail Beckman.
Gail Beckman, Mr. Weber.
Yeah, Guy Weber and Jan.
Jan.
Very good. Next item is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinion and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? See people talking. Yes, no?
I'm Christie Dunne.
Can you come up a little bit closer? State your name, because this is being recorded.
Sure. My name is Christie Dunne. I was Christie Goforth, also from Murfreesboro, attended the school district, and I want to say thank you to all the work that you do. I know it's often a thankless job, and I appreciate the time and effort you put in as school board members. I came specifically tonight just to hear the discussion about the issue for the graduation date being set. I've heard rumors and conjecture as to why it might be moved to one day or another. I certainly hope the reasons I'm hearing aren't true, because they, they don't seem very soundly based. I would hope that we're not setting our graduation date around other communities. Otherwise, we could never have graduation, because we would have to accommodate every other community in Southern Illinois where there might be a conflict with a staff member or a family member. And then I also have heard that it's going to be moved to a Sunday, because there are people come who are drunk on Saturday night. I've been to a few graduations. I've never personally experienced that. So I'm hoping that's simply a rumor and not actually the case, but I figure if you drink on Saturday night, you might drink on Sunday afternoon also. Not, not a very big difference there. So those were my concerns about graduation, and I just certainly hope that the best interest of our students and the families is the concern that's brought forward as that decision's taken. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public or employee? None? All right, thank you all. Let's move to Old Business, and we are moving the discussion of the baccalaureate and graduation dates will be the first item of business.
And I'm going to give Mr. Wilson the floor on this one.
Sure.
No pressure. I thought it was Mr. Corley.
Yeah.
Ready? Sorry, Mr. Corley, go ahead.
So I've got a few suggestions, and we're going to try to talk through things full circle before, you know, and maybe deliver a few options, and my rationale or reasoning for some of what you've heard and some other things. Because there's a lot of layers to it. Before I say anything, it doesn't make as much difference, difference to me if we graduate on a Saturday, a Sunday, or a Wednesday. I'm just grateful that we get to graduate so many kids. Let me just say that. Historically, at least in the last few years, we've always graduated around the weekend of the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, however that's fallen. It's been, you know, if you want to compare it to other schools' graduations, it's generally been a week before, but a lot of that has to do with when we start school and the number of snow days, this, that, and the other. That was the first date that kind of rolled around in my brain when we started talking graduation dates. And then we took a few snow days, you know, you look at that, you know, and that with when we started school, when we're getting out. And I started thinking, maybe that's just a little bit too early. I don't know. But that's why I kind of shifted away from twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth in that area. We haven't had one in that third week of Saturday for quite a few years. And there's a few, you know, I don't want to say concerns, but, you know, I try to look at it full circle and try to, you know, how many kids can be affected? And I'm not going to say the world revolves around athletics, because it doesn't. But we do have two kids this year that I think will be competing at the state track meet on that Saturday, the nineteenth. I would hate for any student, and if, or anybody's student here or out here, you would understand that if a student has to choose between a date, you know, where they can go compete that we don't set and walk into graduation, they may be conflicted one way or another. So I was just trying to take that out of the equation. I do like the idea of an earlier graduation.
By ear, I'm sorry, by earlier, do you mean date or time of, on that day?
Time of date.
Okay.
You know, a couple of years ago, we used to go eight o'clock. We moved, went to seven, to six. You know, I find a little bit of family value in even going just a little bit earlier, regardless if it's a Saturday or a Sunday. Just maybe families want to go have a family dinner afterward, a get-together. If you've got family coming in and out of town, you can say, you know, your goodbyes not being at ten o'clock at night. And that also gives us a little more time to, it's chaos trying to get set up for Senior Fest afterwards. So regardless if we went a Saturday or a Sunday, I would like to see that time go up just a little bit for that, that reason. Maybe that's important to some people. Some people have expressed interest to me that it is important. Another reason that I suggested a Sunday was, you know, with the hopes that it may draw more faculty attendance. Our faculty does not attend Saturday evening of graduation well. I know it's a choice. And, you know, I've had some reach out to me, you know, hey, if it was here and here, you know, they may come. And those are kind of indirect reasons. So, you know, and there is a rationale behind, you know, a lot of other schools having their graduation on Saturday. You know, we live in a small community with other communities nearby, and a lot of our families have families, you know, whether it be Carmel, TriCo, wherever, and, you know, they like to try to attend everybody's, but that's not the reasoning. You know, it was merely a suggestion that I thought might work best for our community, our student body, and, you know, especially, like I said, a few students that may not have the opportunity and have to choose one or the other. If Sunday isn't what, you know, the Board chooses to go with that Sunday, I would ask that we go Saturday, the twelfth. I have no problem Saturday or Sunday. It was more, some of my reasoning were behind just the nineteenth, that specific day. It wasn't because it was a Saturday, it was because of that day. And some of the other conflicts that I saw, and just trying to do what I felt, or make a suggestion I felt is best for, you know, one hundred and twenty-five graduates or whatnot. So I guess I would ask you to take into consideration the twelfth or the twentieth.
I guess, and so, because I'm surprised to hear the twelfth come out of your mouth. I expected the nineteenth to come.
That's what I'm saying, it's not so much about a Sunday, it was, it was more about not the nineteenth.
Because of the track meet, the expected?
Because of that, and just a lot of the other, but I would also like to see an earlier time.
Well, and I know from experience, my, it'd be my cousin, he's my cousin's little this kid. When we had it that third weekend, he didn't walk, because he was in the state track meet. He was pulling up in the bus about the time they were, graduation was over.
And we, I'd still be having the same discussion if it was, you know, a state, you know, band competition or scholar competition or whatever. It's just, that's the date that the IHSA sets. We have no control over it. And I know there's a lot of other schools that graduate on that day, and maybe that's not important to their students, if it affects one or two or whatnot, I don't know. To me, if that were my child, it'd be important to me. It's not a date that we've necessarily, you know, tried to stay off of for the last few years, because with when we start school, that twelfth, thirteenth, it's just made, it's been a better fit for us. But now, like I said, we started a couple of days later, we've taken some snow days, and, you know, by number of school days and practically, you know, probably that weekend of the nineteenth or twentieth, you know, would make sense just on number of school days. But I think it impacts more students or families, and it could potentially, and don't get me wrong, you know, these students I'm talking about, they might, may not make it. I think there's a good chance they do. However, like I said, if, and that's, I'm just trying to stay off that date. But if, if we want to graduate on the nineteenth, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I don't care if we graduate on a Wednesday.
If I don't, what's the main issue with not wanting to have it on a Sunday afternoon? I guess I'm not seeing what the conflict is, so...
I don't know. That was just my suggestion. I, I don't...
The best rationale I've heard is, when you've got family coming in for the weekend, Sunday's the travel day. You graduate on Saturday with your family, and then your family drives home on Sunday.
And I can completely get on board with that. If, if I was in that situation, that was my family, I understand that. I can see it through that lens, and that makes perfectly good sense to me.
Let me add one more thought, is when, if you have Senior Fest on Sunday night, that means parents and teachers are staying up all night long at Senior Fest, and then they have to go to work the next day. So you're either really going to cut your volunteer staff down to nothing?
And historically, we have a small handful of staff that do. You know, this year, I mean, historically, like this year, it's Ms. Hargrave, she's one of our counselors, Ms. Bachi, teacher. Mr. Brown is generally there, and he won't have seniors the next day because, or that Monday, because hopefully they'll all graduate. So, like I said, I'm not trying to, you know, sort of the thought too much. But, I mean, those are just the two suggestions that I, I think would work best for us and give us the least amount of conflicts, so...
What time are you looking at on a Saturday, and is it the same time on a Sunday?
You know, if we're going to go Sunday, I would like maybe a, you know, a one or two o'clock baccalaureate, a four o'clock ceremony. And if we, you know, if we went on a Saturday, just with it being, there is a difference between Saturday and Sunday. Maybe a four or five o'clock ceremony. And then baccalaureate maybe at eleven AM, because that way, you know, if you do Sunday, you want, you want to go out to church. Or, you know, I'd want to have that service not conflict with a Sunday church service, so I would... If we went Saturday, the twelfth, I'd recommend an eleven o'clock baccalaureate.
So the seniors are done that week?
Neither a four or five o'clock ceremony.
So what were they going to do the next week? If we had it on the nineteenth or the twentieth?
Well, they were taking the finals the week before the graduation. That's how we...
Schedule's different.
Yeah, we just worked the schedule a little bit differently.
So, okay, so let me clarify. So first of all, the, the twelfth is SIU's graduation. So now we're going to conflict with that if we go with the twelfth.
And that's what we did last year, we had a...
That's, that's the weekend we've all, we've traditionally always had.
But we have it at seven, eight o'clock at night?
We could go, we went six last year.
Okay.
And we could do six. I'm fine with six. I just, my reasoning for a little bit earlier, in my eyes, I think that allows for a little bit more family time after, especially for the students who would come to Senior Fest later that night.
Okay. Then my other question about the twelfth is, I, it's always been my understanding, and I thought our practice, that as soon as kids walk on graduation, they're not expected to come to school anymore.
Correct.
So they'd be taking finals the first, second week of May, and then they'd be done for about two weeks before all the others.
And that's happened multiple times, where we have a two-week...
It's a line.
And I think that's different than what we, than what you just said? Did you just say they would graduate and come back and take finals? Okay, all right.
The last finals are going to be the week before. The last three years, that's kind of been our schedule.
Right, okay.
We've had about a week and a half gap between seniors being done and everybody else being done.
I thought I just heard something, when you asked, what would seniors do? I thought somebody said, take their finals on...
Well, no, they're adjusting the schedule of when they take the finals.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
If they were taking them the week of that twelfth, or they weren't, then I was asking, what were they going to do the next week?
Yeah, they're setting the week for the twelfth. We'd have graduation practice on the eleventh, and the previous three days would be finals.
The only thing, the only thing I'm going to say about the sports part of it, I mean, that's extracurricular.
I understand.
And we're here for education.
And I'm just trying to see it full circle.
So that's kind of where I would be looking at. I mean, we've run into this before. I know it's, it's not ideal for them. know it's, it's not ideal for them, but there's never gonna be an ideal solution, I don't think.
You're a hundred percent right, there's, there's not a, a one-size-fits-all.
It is what it is.
On any of this, and, like I said, I'm just doing my best to try to see it full circle, through everybody's lens, parent, teacher, student, administrator, and understanding there's not a one-size-fits-all.
If we pushed back the time to something like a 7, or, I know we did 8 o'clock because it was outside, and then it wouldn't be so odd and all that stuff. But if we push it back to 8, that almost gives the athlete time to make it back, but is that just too late?
I don't know.
That's what it was, that year, my cousin did it at 8, by the time he got back there.
I just don't know, it's, 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 like I said, it's a guessing game, so I don't even know if it's gonna impact anybody or not, you know, if you want to do Saturday, the 12th, we could go a 6 or 7 o'clock.
So, do people come, if it's on a Saturday at 8 o'clock though, do people come drunk?
Yeah.
Yep.
There's a few, isn't there?
It gets, it's a little rowdier the later you go.
So.
I mean, that's not, it's.
What time is coming?
It does happen, you've, you've been on duty there before.
Last year was the calmest one in a long time.
And we went at 6 o'clock. I'm okay with 6 o'clock, you know, I'm just thinking a little bit earlier, it'll allow more family time, especially if people are getting up on Sunday and traveling back.
So, I guess I'm hearing three, three options, either 12th, 19th, or 20th?
I don't feel like Tony's advocating for the 19th.
It's an option, I, listen, I'm fine either way, it, it makes, personally, it makes me no difference. I'm just trying to see it through the eyes of everybody else, and just take in what I hear in my building, or students, or, you know, this, that, and the other, and try to pile it all together, and.
Have you gotten any feedback?
I know my building is fond of Sunday.
But what about, I mean, this is, this is about the kids and the, and the families.
I, I haven't heard, as, you know, Ms. Miller's reached out to me, I haven't heard anything else, one way or the other, on that. I've heard a lot of I-don't cares, you know.
I heard Sundays, I heard with the tickets, it's not like a lot of out-of-town are coming, but.
And, and I don't want that to happen, you know, and if that impacts a handful of families, then, you know, I don't want that by any means. You know, like I said, traditionally, we went that weekend around the 12th, 13th, 14th, and there's been a weekend gap. I just thought with snow days, start a couple of days later this year, I mean, I'm okay with that. It wasn't, like I said, initially, it wasn't so much about Saturday or Sunday, it was just, I saw through other people's eyes, I thought a few more conflicts on that, on the 19th, so.
So, you're rec, then you're, basically, I guess what your recommendation is, is the 12th or the 20th?
Correct. And like I said, it's not so much a Saturday or Sunday thing as much.
Baccalaureate happening a couple hours before the graduation.
Yeah, and I just, by all means, I would assume the majority of the people behind me would prefer Saturday, the 12th, if I was, if you're taking a struggle without me looking, I'm okay with that.
No, I said anything, but I, I still think, because of the family situation, Sunday's tough.
Okay.
That's the way I see it, that's, I'm one person, I'm one vote.
I can get along with that completely, so, I would say, hearing that, I, my recommendation, recommendation would be Saturday, the 12th, 7 o'clock. 11 o'clock baccalaureate.
7 o'clock?
Seven.
6, 7, whatever. You said, you said later, or maybe.
Well, no, I said that if we did.
No, she was talking about the 19th.
Okay, then let's just follow what we did last year. We had a 6 o'clock ceremony, we had an 11 o'clock baccalaureate, and that's that.
On the 12th.
That weekend that, that's the same weekend we did last year.
Alright, so the recommendation then, from administration, is to have graduation on May the 12th at 6 o'clock, baccalaureate at?
11.
11. Okay, that's your recommendation, yes sir.
Home.
Alright. I know. Alright, I'm seeing more thumbs up than anything, so, okay. So, the recommendation from administration is to have graduation, May the 12th, baccalaureate at 11 o'clock, graduation at 6 o'clock. I need a motion to approve, to approve this. In a second.
Second.
You wanna roll it?
I'll link you to it, we definitely don't, but if you.
Alright, all in favor?
I'm fine.
Opposed? There you go. Go ahead if you want to.
Tony, Mr. Wilson?
Sir.
Will, will you tweet out that information, get it up on the, what, what we need to get that, because a lot of people were thinking it was the 20th or the 19th, and there might be some phone calls to families saying, we're doing it a weekend earlier.
Alright, is anybody cold now?
Sure, get spread real quick.
What's wrong, Rick?
No.
Hell, I swear. Next order of business under old, under old business is the district financial update. Mr. Godey, this is informational, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're still waiting for April, for the evidence-based funding model numbers to, to, to come through, we're hopeful April will be when we start seeing some of that.
There's, there's still some cleanup language that will affect how money's distributed under, under the formula, and it has to do with percentage versus a bell curve, some of the, some of the specific language that they're still trying to work out, the state board and the general legislators, could change our numbers, we were somewhere in the, I want to say 740,000, but that was based on certain set of assumptions, certain set of enrollment, when those numbers were ran previously, so.
The last thing they want to do is give us a number, and then tell us we're not getting that number.
Right, so those were estimates, so we're not sure, but I think because of the, you know, the primary election, there are many that would like to see that stick a fork in it, get done, start getting us paid, as we move into the fall into a general election, so.
Speaking of the election, however, though, the governor's budget address, he, he mentioned the, the tax swap, and for all of you, we need to understand, that's very bad. It's very bad, all the extra money that we would be getting.
Pension shift.
Cost shifting.
Cost shifting.
Call it whatever you want, it's basically saying that we have to pay what the state normally would pay for the pensions, they want to fix the pension problems by shoving it down to the locals, and causing locals more problems, so the extra money we would get would probably end up going into the pension system, if that, I call it a tax swap, but it's a cost share or a pension shift.
It's not really a cost share at all, right?
I don't think shares are ever worth at all.
Depends on what side of the fence you are.
It's not shared.
I think Governor Roner would call it a share.
Well, the, and the proposal was to, to, to take it by that 25% at a time, but for us, the state pays, it, it's on our, on our audit every year, under, payments on behalf of, it's, I think, $3.3 million the state pays, so for us, they have to turn around by the end of that, that four years and pay, and it's only $3.3 million.
Is that yearly?
Well, it would start out, but the first year, if, if we had to pay 25%, the first year, it would be over, it would be like $825,000, which is more than we'll get in new money. The next year, it's double that, the third, you know, so, so it escalates, so by the fourth year, we would be paying $3.3 million, we'll never, I shouldn't say never, but in, in those few years, we're not gonna get that much in, under the evidence-based model.
So, when you hear people saying how they're gonna fix the pensions through that method, you just need to be aware that they're going to kill the local guy.
And the only way to do that, the only way to, to generate the money to, to be able to do that, is an increase in property taxes, but in order to do that, we would have to, that would have to be outside of tax caps, because right now, if, if you say, okay, yeah, you can pay for that in property taxes, and they don't take it outside of tax caps, then, you know, much bigger problem, because then the pot is still the same size, so you're having, you're, you're taking money away from education, basically, to pay those pensions. So, it's bad, that is not a thing we want.
You save amount of money to pay for all with.
And if they say you can expand it, you're still hitting our local taxpayers up for three and a half more million dollars, when you get to the fourth, I mean, it's terrible, it's terrible on our local economy.
Okay, that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next order is the high school auditorium update, also informational.
Next week's gonna be the exciting week, the walls are coming in, we're talking about 50-foot-long, nine-foot-wide concrete panels that will be craned and put into place. We have lined the parking lot, or not the parking lot, we've turned our tennis courts into parking lots, the teachers are gonna move a lot of their cars over there, and the students are moving their cars, and Tony's been working with the student body to get a understanding of where everything needs to go while these devices come in, we're closing off 16th Street, he's meeting with the police officers just to make sure that we've got all of our security and safety things under control. The students at the English department are all moving to the library or to other classrooms during that time as well, don't expect any problems, but, uh, traffic is, is probably the biggest concern, some backup, we talked about the, in the morning on the 26th, there might be a, a line of semis on, you know, as a jockey for position to be the first ones to start dropping off their stuff, so.
Can we charge admission?
No.
To watch this?
I mean.
I think it's gonna be a pretty cool bit.
We actually, we actually talked about videoing it, and construction workers are very cautious, the work stops when people start videoing, because of OSHA and other safety.
Well, speaking of safety, I was reading on here, I guess, that, have we gotten a list from Fager McGee of all of the construction workers, so that they could be screened?
They have to, they have to go get background checks before they come outside.
So, even these coming in with the, with the concrete walls?
Uh, the truck drivers, I don't think fall into that category, I'm not positive, I didn't check, but anybody physically staying on site has to be.
Okay, and so that's been done?
Yes.
Okay.
Never have issues with them unless it's a roofers.
Hmm, no.
Roofing, whenever you have a roofing project, you always have guys that, they have to try and man out, it's an oddity of the profession.
So, those are expected to come in the 26th?
Yeah, so that week, you're gonna see the, um, the outer shell of the auditorium be put into place, so it's really gonna be a huge transition. Right now, you've got these two odd little.
Pillars.
That's, that's the two sides of the, of where the stage is.
That's the sides of the state, the opening to the state.
The wind didn't affect him today?
He has, when I was out there last, he hadn't died off real well, I haven't heard anything about a crash yet.
Alright, that's it? Thank you. Next order is a presentation on benchmarking, also informational, Mr. Grophy.
Why is it not coming out of that screen?
Is it what didn't went with the wall back here? Looks like it's.
It is, because that's my desktop.
Thanks.
You know what, that's not my desktop, that's his desktop.
Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Corley, just send me a text, he's sick.
I'm not looking for, I'm looking for the input.
I'm gonna have to find it, Steve.
It's been going.
That is my desktop. There we go. Alright, this is the, uh, information from our winter benchmarking. I told you guys, uh, previously that we use AIMS Web at the younger grades, and we're, this is the first year using the MAP NWEA, and I've gone into more details in that, in this review, but what you can see, right from here, from the fall to the winter. Jam, could you, jam?
Am I right in your way?
Do you scoot that way?
You can't see, you're.
I just can't see my own stuff.
I'll shake him over here. That way.
Not a problem, I got, I got it under control. Alright, as you can see, huge growth here. The, the goal of the triangle is the 18, 15, 5, ideally, what you'd like to see is 80% in the green, 15% in the yellow, and 5% in the red. This is the kindergarten, early literacy, where they do oral reading fluency, letter naming fluency, phoneme segmentations, things of that nature, and substantial growth. First grade, same thing, as we do this over and over, what you're gonna see is, notice how first grade started off, notice how kindergarten is, is, is gonna end off. One of the problems we're gonna need to face is we start really looking into this and, and making tweaks, is regression, summer regression. But, uh, first grade, huge growth with that early literacy, and second grade also. Third grade, they came in a little stronger, there was still some substantial growth, but as you get to that level, you stop, you know, AIMS Web is really good when you're learning to read, MAP NWEA is what you use when you want, want your reading to learn. Here's the NWEA for the winter benchmarking, I showed you this last time, and we talked about the, uh, the five areas. You look that next to third grade AIMS Web.
Right.
It's too small.
No, the standard deviation of 20.
Yeah.
So, you've got.
Pretty big.
Well, you've got some outliers.
Right. When you compare this, though, then, to the, the, the AIMS Web benchmarking data, and again, remember, you're, you're, with AIMS Web, you're looking at a norm reference, just a standard. The MAP assessment is a adaptive test, that means every time the child answers a question correctly, the questions get harder, if he answers it incorrectly, the questions get easier, because it's trying to find where do you fall? So, you, I, I took the average, the high average, and the high, and you get 45% in the red, or no, you get 42% in the green, compared to the AIMS Web of 65. Yellow's 13 to 13, and you got 45 to 21 in the red, but really, what you're doing there is comparing apples and oranges. Benchmarking based on norm levels, as I've said, adaptive testing to find their skill levels, AIMS Web builds toward oral reading fluency, the MAP does not have oral reading fluency, it's focusing in on the standards, now that you're able to read, how do you do on the standards? AIMS Web, a great point about that is, it's down and dirty, it's pretty much, it's nice and quick. The MAP takes about six hours, okay, which is a considerable amount of time. Best for primary building, foundational skills is the AIMS Web, and the MAP is best for standards-based instruction. So, what we're trying to do, we piloted just two classrooms in the third grade, because we didn't really think that third grade, the MAP would be that useful, and we didn't want to spend that amount of time with a, a larger group. We're trying to figure out which grade level do we start with the, with the MAP, you know, do we start just with fifth grade? At what point do we really start diving into the standards and have the children reading to learn, is really the question there? So, fourth grade, going back to the AIMS Web, you see that growth. Fifth grade, they don't do AIMS Web in fifth grade, which is why you would do the MAP, regardless of, now, what's nice about the MAP is, I showed you before just these things, and this is overall, for the aggregate for reading, but you can break it down to these different standards, and you can start comparing the, um, the levels and the, the gaps that you have based on those standards. More importantly, you can print out a, a report like this, and these are all students, this is the average score, but then, the standard for literacy texts, for literacy text language, informational texts, information, informational texts with language craft structure, okay, everywhere, these are, are the ranges to which that student scored within. So, you can then drop that into Excel and start doing some searches, and you can start grouping and regrouping your RTI information based on that. Another report that we find is this student progress report. When I went to the middle school, I got one of these for my son, the only reason there's no orange dot here is when I printed this out, we didn't close out the assessment yet, there's a button you have to push on the, the thing, so typically, you'd have a thing here, but this would show you how the student scored compared to how the, uh, the norm grade level scores, and the orange is then the district, so this kid scored above, were above the school average, and is about where the, the normed average is, you'd expect him to This report, um, shows you from the fall, he was yellow for this operations and algebraic thinking, and in the winter, he's no longer in concern. For numbers and, uh, operations, he stayed above, this one, he fell behind. This kind of information, when you start seeing patterns like that, well, is there something we need to do about measurements and, uh, data? You know, do we need to move some lessons around? Why, why did we drop there? uh, data? You know, do we need to move some lessons around? Why, why did we drop there? Is that planned drop? Not like you'd plan it, but will it get caught up in the spring? And so with this data, you can start looking at, when do you need to teach things? Why do you need to teach things? Um, so that's just another goal-setting worksheet for the students. So in the fifth grade for reading, you can look at what happened in the, uh, fall, and this data down here is the winter. So you can compare, oop, got it off of there. You can pick, compare the data for the grade level in the aggregate here. Or, in this form, you've got fall and winter for sixth grade right here, seventh grade right there, and eighth grade right there. Um, these reports are extremely useful when you start having your teachers looking at their curriculum, looking at their, um, instructional practices, and trying to hone in on, on the areas that need to be changed. And this is called the district summary report. This is, what is this one? Oh, this one's for mathematics. So you can do that for mathematics or reading. Same report. We met at the beginning of the year, Mr. Keener, Mrs. Cochran, Mr. Carrington and I, and we went through our data of students. And we picked out kids that, um, had multiple failures over the years. They failed courses more than once, or they had issues. So this person here, that I've blocked out, these three are the same person. And they had math and language arts, um, were, were the issues that they have. So this is their literature score, their math score, their writing score. This is the same person that was targeted. And so what we're looking at is, historically, when a, a child has failed a lot of classes, our policy, like it or not, if you fail one class, you can still be promoted to the next grade. And we wrestle, just like every district around us wrestles with, what do you do with a kid that fails math every year? He's not gonna be able to be successful in high school in math if he's failed it every year. This allows us the information to try and then target the kids with multiple failures. And as you can see over here, this one didn't have any growth in literature, but, you know, a growth of nine, a growth of 13. Uh, at the middle school, they are targeting those kids for response to interventions. They're doing extra instruction with those children. And we're seeing the, uh, targeting of them paying off. This gets into ninth grade. We started this year just doing the ninth graders at the high school because as we move forward, next year, when we do the ninth grade, we can do the 10th grade. And we can compare those students as we move along. Because that report that I showed you where it was the student, all of this data, then, is shared. So you can see a historical analysis of how they did it when we first started to where we ended.
Shared between teachers, grade levels? What do you mean?
Uh, well, when you get in access, once you have access into there and you can see that kid.
Like you log into their account, that kid?
Yeah. The teacher, well, no, the teacher logs into their account, and they've got all their kids listed. And so when you look at that kid, yeah, it has information for that kid's there. Ninth grade reading, looking at the standards, um, questions. That was a real cursory view. The key thing there are the reports and the time. We're, we're allowing our teachers to really focus in and start looking at the standards, look at their instruction, their curriculum maps, and, uh, have some conversations on who's not making it, how do we get them to make it. Um, I am excited about what the middle school's doing with those, targeting of those kids that have a history of, of failures. 'Cause really, a lot of the, the issues that we have to deal with is, is remediating some of that.
How long does the testing take? Six hours, you said, for...
Yeah, for the bench, for the NWEA. So it is a longer test.
Okay, is that over several days, or how are they, how are they doing?
We're still working that out.
We did at the beginning of the year, we did...
Thank you. Jump in.
Over a few days. So they did independent one class. But this last time, for the winter benchmark, we did it all in one day, which...
Warmed out.
But then, but we did this three times a year. So it's, that's three classroom, one session, a...
Right.
Okay.
The, uh, yeah, this is, uh, the NWEA MAP assessment. Um, 75% of the districts in Illinois use it. It's the one that with the park, we're hoping becomes closer to the, it's one of them that a lot of people at the, at the Title I conferences would say they'd like to see it become the state assessment.
'Cause all that data's great. I just wanna know when teacher are gonna have the time to analyze it and use it usefully. Because one little blip in all of that I saw was the time it took for whatever student to take the test. And it went all the way from 75 to 28 minutes.
Yeah.
So, and every piece of that matters on the score, and I don't know when teachers have the time. So do, I guess the question is, when do teachers have time to analyze this and use it?
Those monthly half-days are, are the, the main time that we have to do it. Um, we, we need to get better in our systems thinking to organize that time for them.
And the teachers are feeling that that's worth the time, the data that they're getting from, it's worth that amount of time on the test?
It's the first year, so we're working out kinks. Teachers, do you feel like the data's worth it so far, or?
We're having, we're having a hard time, back and forth. The data is excellent, and we really can use the data. But when we talk about three days minimum for each benchmark plus part testing, we're talking two full weeks curriculum just for testing. That's just for these types. Including the regular assessments we have to give throughout the year. I have to do STAR tests four times. There was another four days, a whole four week curriculum. It's, but the data is important. So it's...
But the data doesn't help us if we try to aggregate it and figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
And we don't have time for half-days.
Yeah. We've talked about reaching out to a district that has, um, used it successfully for a long time to find out what their systems and structures look like for their staff developments and their, you know, using of the data. The other thing, I don't know, if, I, I, I went through in my account and got a lot of those reports out. And once you start understanding how it's structured, it's not as bad. But it is kind of a cumbersome...
It's difficult at first without training to understand how to use it. I've had to play with it quite a bit, and then you forget, oh, that was that great report. Just that one great report.
Where is it?
I mean, it's hard. We need to know what we're doing. We, they have been working, the administration's been trying to get us some teachers from other districts to come in, 'cause that's the best resource you have out there.
And you're just doing...
Is for them to come to us, show us how they use it, how that, with the reports that are most useful for them. Because a webinar or two teachers don't go training and trying to show us what to do, it doesn't work. We have no clue. We need people who have been using it, just like we are in the trenches, and know how to make it work, to come to us. And they were supposed to, I've been working on getting that sort of way here in the wild.
You're doing the STAR too, just because that's what you were doing, and you're just piloting this?
Yeah.
And you're gonna get rid of that if this...
I don't know.
STAR provides a different result.
Yeah. There's a lot of love for the STAR still, so.
Well, I, I know that you said a lot of it is, you know, focusing on students that need extra, that extra help. But then, you know, I guess my concern is too, is then what are we doing for the students that don't need extra help, that, um, need maybe just more of a challenge?
And I think what's, what comes from that is, is we need to really look at our aggregate data. Because if you saw a lot of our, our building scores weren't at the, where the norm should be. And so it's a matter of looking at your curriculum maps, looking at your instructional practices, and looking at the standards, and really, um, trying to figure out how do you get those kids to reach that mark? Because we've got kids that should be reaching it. And we've got kids that individually do. Um, it's a, it's a matter of, yeah.
Why, I think, I, I guess my concern is, is maybe, are there, maybe there's, if something's not being taught, then they're not gonna know the answer on the question if it's not being taught to them.
Right.
So I guess that's, then, I know we're gonna talk about that at some point, but...
Yeah. That's where the curriculum mapping really comes into play. And then the, the analysis of where do we need to add, what do we need to add. But not just the standards, where do we need to move and add, but the, the instructional practices of how do we layer it. And, and, you know, we're working on horizontal alignment right now, but then there's this whole vertical piece as well, so.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Grody. Next item of business is the approval of the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Yeah, you have a, a copy of the 18-19 school calendar. We met with the association. Um, the recommendation is to approve it as presented. Um, Ms. James and Ms. Miller sat on the committee with me and Mr. Todd and Ms. Pearson, and went over the survey data. And I think we came up with a pretty, pretty good calendar.
Any questions from the board? I don't see graduation listed on here yet.
We used to set graduation dates with the calendar originally, and we got stuck a couple of times with snow days, so.
I will say, you know, I'll voice this again, having orientation at multiple schools on the same night is often problematic for parents, families that have students at more than one school.
We backed both of the ones off a, a half an hour to the...
A time. 'Cause we talked about that. And, um, but we also decided that it was important for younger kids to see their school building, one, to know it, and two, to get excited. So that's why we wanted to work with those days before school started. So, of course, somebody came up with, um, separating the timeframes. So you have a, a gap between the, the two.
'Cause you do. You wanna make sure everybody gets there. The middle school and the high school are, are, are basically for, um, freshmens or sixth graders and new students. But, um...
They're four less.
Other questions?
Again, parent-teacher conferences are also difficult for parents that have children at multiple schools when they're offered on the same night.
We talked about that too. And, you know, the teachers were talking about, you know, they have a concern, their parent has a concern. They're more than willing to talk to them and work that out.
Those are my only thoughts.
No, very good. Okay, um, hearing no more questions, I would accept a motion to approve the 2018-2019 school calendar as presented.
Someone...
Well, second. It's a great calendar.
All in favor?
It's just me.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Mrs. James and Mrs. Miller, thank you for the time, along with, uh, the NWEA. We appreciate that. Okay, the approval of Press Policy 96.
Yeah, we discussed it and had our first reading last month. I've gotten no calls or questions, so the recommendation is to approve them as presented.
For the recommendation from administration, do we have a motion to approve?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business, this is informational, is the 2017-2018 seniority list.
Yeah. Um, there was a question when we had the original, uh, voting on it. I, I, I shared that we had a, an issue with one of the staff members. They had a question regarding it. We've met with them, and we've cleared up that question to the best of our ability. The, uh, two key issues are 170 days makes a year for, for that, and that comes from school code or from TRS policies, um, both of those. And then, uh, seniority will not accrue during leaves, which is, uh, in our CBA. And, um, had a nice meeting with Mr. Todd and, and Ms. Pearson, and actually, Ms. Ward. And we discussed this and went over it. And it might be a co, topic of discussion for, uh, negotiations. Um, the bottom line is that if you are on extended leave and you run out of sick days, you, during those leaves, you don't accrue time. So you do lose your seniority.
The bottom line is unpaid leave.
Yes.
Okay.
Unpaid leave.
Not just leave, unpaid leave. Okay.
And Ms. Dora's question about whether or not this is negative for the, um, you know, the young woman that's having babies, uh, you know, first hired you, haven't had time to build up your days, and that's when they typically have their baby. So you do see that with maternity leaves, but, um, you see that with any kind of leaves, with medical attention, so, um, that address any issues or concerns?
She doesn't like it.
Here's what it is.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grody. And the last item under old business is the IMRF Early Retirement Incentive. And this is informational?
It is. At this point, it's informational. Uh, we are still working with IMRF. Uh, we provide IMRF with information to prepare the cost study, and they told us they needed some additional information for the cost study. So, um, and the idea is to bring, um, I, I shouldn't say the worst-case scenario, but the most expensive scenario under the cost study, assuming everyone on the list, you know, we can't say, oh, I know so-and-so said that they're probably not gonna go. We can't make that assumption because we have to open the window for an entire year, and each person on that list has the opportunity to retire within that window. So I, I have to bring to the board the cost study, which shows, um, the maximum cost for that, for those, all those people on the list, um, any vacation days that they have that we would be, um, because any employees who have vacation days, 12-month employees, um, would be able to use those days to pay for any liability they have for their share of the early retirement incentive. Um, also, if, and this, this goes for anyone applying, or, um, applying to retire under the early retirement incentive, a 403B plan that they might have, you know, to shelter taxes, uh, we offer, have offered that every year. That could also be rolled over to help pay for their liability. So, you know, lots of different options. Um, 24 months, once, once they retire, they have 24 months to pay for that. So they could basically set up a, uh, it's not a payment plan, but it would come out of their first 24 paychecks, so, uh, retirement checks. So, um, but long story short, um, we're looking to, to recommend, when we get the cost study next month, to open that window, June 30th of 18.
We should have the data in time for it to be in their board packets for them to review around.
Yes, and that's the idea.
For the March meeting.
Yes, for the March meeting. Actually, I hope to have it in the next, within the next two weeks. So plenty of time.
Is she giving this, Mrs. Fine giving you indication that she'll have it within two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And the requirements again are?
Uh, 30, or 30 years, 20 years.
Okay.
And age 50.
Age 50.
Age 50. And they, if they have reciprocal credit, um, somewhere else, you know, SERs, um, you know, I'd say TRS.
And the maximum service time is?
40 years is the maximum, uh, for a maximum pension. And there are actually people on that list that if, uh, they won't need a whole five years to get them to the four years. So, um, that will, you know, that...
So they don't have to buy five? They can buy whatever they need to get them?
They don't have to buy, they don't have to buy five years because their pension max is out.
Can they, can they, what if they've got 20 years, but they're 49?
No. They have to be 50. By the end of the window, by the end of the window.
By June 30th of next school year.
So by the last day, and so...
So the only thing you can buy...
It gives you five years of age and five years of service credit, but you have to be 50 and have that 20 years by the time the window closes on June 30th of 19. So that's one of the reasons that we, that we adjusted and looked at that window. We talked about offering it in the spring, but there are employees that would have missed that window, you know, someone, we have someone on the list that turns 50 in June, midway through June of 19. So you had to say, oh, gosh, if, you know, 10 more days, you could have, you know, you, you could have gone. So we, that's why we tried to look at when we could get the most people. Um, while still, you know, we, we have some people that have already put in letters for, for June 30th of this year, while trying, trying to, um, give them that benefit as well. So that, that will, that will be our recommendation, and that is the, um, cost study that I've asked for, June 30th to June 30th. Um, also the other thing that we have to determine, um, is, um, whether the district pays. You have the option to pay, um, the employee's share as well as the employer's share. And at this point, administration can't recommend that we pick up the employee's cost. Um, if times were, if we were flush with cash and we were Lake Forest or one of those districts, maybe we could do that, but for, for us at this point.
Well, I think we're gonna do what we've done in the past.
Right. And we've done both. I mean, the last time we offered, um, uh, we only paid the employer's share. But in, in the past, um, I wanna say, maybe the time before, we, we paid the employee's share. And that's, and that's one of those things that, that is due, I mean, the, the employer's share, we pay through our IMR, IMR freight, and we pay for over five years. But the employee's share, it's due right now. So when the employee retires, here's your bill. So, I mean, that's something that, I mean, is, for us, is not, just not fiscally responsible, especially with the, the number of, you know, with a third of our, um, non-certified employees being eligible to retire, so, during that window.
Good.
during that window. So we'll, we'll have all the information. And, and I will say the last time we offered it, we're on the same time schedule. We, we did, we approved, the board approved, the incentive in March of, I'd say, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven. And we opened the window June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven. So we're right on the same time schedule.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mrs. Bush. You did tell Mrs. Ward that she could not retire, right?
Yes, I did.
I think I was the one that kept saying it.
All right, moving to new business. Resolution to include cash payments related to health insurance as IMRF earnings.
Yes. And this is kind of an odd thing, but this is a resolution that the board, as the administrative district for Tri-County Special Ed, they are part of our IMRF group. They have the same, they're employees, on their statements it says Murfreesboro, you know, COSC one A six. So this is something that we would have to pass for them. And what has happened is they have, for a number of years, they have offered as part of their contractual bargaining agreement, cash payments in lieu of health insurance. And they have done that. And so for the IMRF employees, that has, you know, they, that's earnings for them, basically. They get that cash, that's income, that's earnings. But they did not pass this resolution when they started doing that. So IMRF, at some point, maybe during an audit, it came up and they said, okay, so now you have to retroactively pass this resolution to cover yourself for those, for the way that that's been reported. So that's what this is. And this doesn't affect us, even though it could. I mean, if we, if we had cash payments for health insurance, this resolution would cover us in that, if we ever decided that's something we're going to do as part of a bargaining agreement or part of the practice. But it doesn't mean we have to do anything. It just covers Tri-County. And their, Tri-County Board, Administrative Board did approve, you know, I asked them to do that first, to review the resolution and approve that before it came to us as the administrative district. So it, it would be administrative, administration's recommendation to approve the resolution. Just out of curiosity, how much do they pay out in lieu of health insurance? So, no, it's been so long since we, since we've talked about that or looked at that. I really don't know off the top of my head how much it is. I, I really don't. I can find out easily from your point of view.
Well, while you're, as, is this, from this date forward, employees now know that that cash they're getting is going to go with the IMRF? Are we talking about a...
It already has.
Yeah, we're like, we're going back and employees know that?
It's already been going in time.
I know. But do they understand, all these employees understand that they're going back to whenever they passed this resolution? And employees are now going to see a significant change?
No, it won't be a change for them. It won't be a change for them. They've been, they've been treating it this way all along. They just didn't have a resolution that covered it, is what I'm saying.
I understand they've been doing it. I guess what I'm saying is now it's going to be going towards IMRF earnings.
And it has been.
Right. But do employees now realize that this is going back retroactively?
For Tri-County employees?
Yeah. Do they understand the impact of this, I guess, is what I'm... They understand it's been doing, been going on. Do they understand the impact?
I don't, I, what impact are you talking about?
There really isn't an impact.
You're, from taxation?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
They've already been saying...
But they, but they just never had a resolution to do.
So they just, I guess, never legitimized it.
Right, reconnaissance.
Okay, all right.
This is what IMRF told them they needed to do, you know, because they, they go through and they look for those or not. And so do you have this resolution, that resolution? Or you don't have that, you need to pass it.
Okay.
Are they going to do this every year or...
No, it's a one-time thing. IMRF has one-time, one-time resolutions.
Other questions? I heard the recommendation of administration. Do we have a motion to approve? And second?
Second.
Yep, Nancy.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent, Mrs. James?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent, Mr. Rungy.
Yes, motion carries. Next item of business is the approval of Health Life Safety Amendment for MMS Elevator Replacement Project.
Yes, when, when I wrote the board agenda, I kind of included everything I could think of on that project in what we might write in the amendment to the State Board of Education. We can't use Health Life Safety for all the things I said. But, you know, I thought, well, we'll try, maybe we can get some, all those things in. Basically, Health Life Safety funds, we can spend on the elevator itself. And we're asking to use those Health Life Safety funds, which we already have. We've levied property taxes for that, but in order to spend that money, we have to get approval by the State Board of this amendment. So this is to replace the existing elevator with four, with new four-stop electric traction elevator, two-thousand-pound capacity. And we told the State Board, the existing elevator no longer functions as it should. Replacement parts required are no longer available. And that is, I mean, I think we're basically duct tape and failing twine keeping that elevator together. So, so this is something that, with the board approval, then we will go on, Mr. Grody and I can go on the Iwas State Board, Iwas Electronic System, and sign off that this is a day of board meeting, Mr. Rungy, President, Mrs. Ward, Secretary, and, and request approval. Then it goes to the Regional, Regional Board, Regional Office of Education before it goes to the State Board. So this is something we've done in every case when we've spent Health Life Safety funds on any project. So we are just asking to be able to utilize Health Life Safety funds to be able to put that towards the elevator project.
Any questions from the board?
Anything else that, did I say that?
All right. Don't hear any questions, so I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation. In a second.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent, Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent. Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
And Mr. Rungy.
Yes, motion carries. And the la, oh, I'm sorry, not last item. Next item of business is the permission to bid, bid for sound equipment for the high school auditorium.
When we originally did the auditorium, we looked at the amount of money for the sound equipment, and we decided to pull it out because of all the different layers and the markups that happen with that. We know exactly what we want. However, the cost of that, at the bidding requirements, what we're asking is to go out to bid for the equipment, and then we'll have it installed.
Questions? What was the rough estimate on that cost? Do you remember?
Uh, I think we're in. Our estimate or the original estimate?
The original.
Was it a hundred thousand dollars? They, they, we had written in a hundred thousand dollars. This equipment's going to cost us, I think, around sixty. That's all?
Sixty?
Yeah.
Sixty?
Sixty. Sixty, I wouldn't need to bid.
Great. So we'll treat this as we do all, when we bid for paper and all those things. We have a very specific set of, you know, we kind of have the bid document out there that we've already tried and trust, tried and tested, and just lists the specific equipment.
We know the exact model numbers.
Yes, this is what we want. Steve has been working on that to make sure that we have. And, you know, and this is something that they've talked to other schools and make sure we get what we want the first time around.
Right.
And what we want, sorry, maybe I'm stupid, is only sixty thousand dollars? Because to me, that sounds cheap for a huge auditorium that we're...
It's just the, the sound equipment, that means not...
Well, I know, but I'm still, it just sounds cheap.
That's about right.
Really?
It's okay.
They came up with...
That's good. I mean, I'm just...
And then do we have to bid, bid somebody or find somebody to install it, or is it already...
Yeah, we'll need somebody to install it.
And that'll be a separate thing?
That'll be a separate, yeah.
So it's not just sixty thousand?
Labor.
But you don't have the architectural fees and...
I was making sure Steve...
All the backbone to the systems and the project, condos, everything else.
So really, the wires will be easy to run and everything, so.
Other questions?
Do we need Steve? He's standing outside.
Does he need us?
Was I wrong on the sixty?
He's wrong on the sixty.
Oh, what is it?
It's roughly ninety grand for parts, twenty, twenty-ish in labor for the installs. We're at a hundred and ten total. Initial estimate that I think Jim had given us is one fifty.
Okay. I was looking for a text to see if you sent me a text on that.
Does that make you feel better?
A little bit, yeah. Makes me feel thirty thousand dollars better.
Any other questions from the board? All right, then we need a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Can we add my name?
No.
I'm sorry. I thought you were going on close.
No. I will entertain a motion for the recommendation from administration to bid out the sound equipment for the auditorium at the high school.
On motion.
And a second?
Second.
Nancy, roll this, please.
Mrs. James? Oh, I'm sorry, it was Mrs. Dor, correct? Let's back here. Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent, Mr. Green absent, and then Mr. Rungy.
Yes, motion carries. And the last item for new business is the security discussion informational.
This is just informational. There is, Dr. Steve Webb, who's the superintendent in Goreville, does ALIS training. That's active shooter training for, for schools. Jackson County also does aid training. And Chief Roberts here in town is now certified for alert craze, civilian response to active shooter emergencies. I'm kind of reviewing the, the different ones and trying to select the, the right one. I'm talking to various professionals that I know about that. What we want to have is a in-service where we get on the same page and speak the same language. We've got our emergency drills and everything like that, but with the recent events, this, this Florida situation was a, it's a game-changer because a lot of our security drills that we do were used against us in that, in that event. So it's a matter of kind of starting the process of relooking at all of our security plans to try and see where we come from that. So I just wanted you to be aware of what we're doing with that. We're going to have some training for all of this.
When would you possibly have this training?
I'm looking at trying to get it on that April half-day. What you want to do is you want to get everybody together to have that same, that same conversation, that same, hear the same words, hear this, get on the same page.
And how long is that training that, that Mr. Webb provides?
Um...
Do you have any idea?
And again, it would be a half, it would be the half-day, yeah. But then you'd need follow-up training, you know, for each different building, the, you know, the plans and whatnot. And we just need to review everything that we do.
Just based upon...
And come at it from a, a new perspective, so.
So the administrators will be looking at their plans to update those and...
Yeah. And, and we might need to wait a while. I mean, there's a lot of information coming out based on the Florida shooting and new advice and everything. But right now, I think a lot of people are just still analyzing it, trying to wrap their heads around it. And, um...
I wonder though, if you would need to wait for individual school plans to be developed because of, you know, basing on that info. But just your basic active shooter training, I think that's going to kind of be the same, because you're talking about reactions and what to do. And, but I, I mean, I get what you're saying, that you want to learn from the horrific experiences. And I could see that when we're talking about individual plans. But overall, active shooter, you know, when you think about what's involved in that, might, might just be the same. I would think the sooner the better.
What's, for March fourteenth, I think, is like that National Walkout Day? What's the position on that?
We are, I actually talked to Tony today about that. There's a March fourteenth and there's, there's an April one as well. I don't know what, the twentieth. There's, March fourteenth is a walkout for the, um...
Seventeen minutes, right?
Yeah. We're looking at doing a seventeen minutes of silence on that day at the high school, so that we wouldn't need to walk out. We'll just do the seventeen minutes of silence. And on the April twentieth is a walkout for the day. And we're, we're trying to figure out how to make that a learning experience. We talked a little bit about maybe we get some politicians around and, you know, go out to the football field or something and talk. I don't know. But for the March one, we're, we're trying to do the seventeen minutes of silence, is what he said, so. I had to look at my notes. I forgot to have that conversation today.
Any other questions from the board? It's sad that we've come to this. That's our society today. Okay, need to, we have a need to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section Two of the Open Meeting Act, filed in March, filed statutes one twenty slash two, see, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including the testimony on a complaint...
Folks, we're not, we're not, we're not out of open session yet, please. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Nancy?
Can't find her name. Okay. Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent, Mr. Green absent, Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Now you can leave.